To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The Town of Burlington will be holding the November 2nd, 2023 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note that while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the hearing, meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those of you seeking to participate remotely, you can do so by going to townofberlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number is 2354-711-1867. You can participate on the phone by dialing 617-315-0704. If you are on the webex and looking to participate, please raise your hand and staff will request, will send you a request to unmute your microphone at the appropriate time. The meeting is being broadcast on Bcat Government Channel, Comcast 99, RCM 15, and Verizon 41. It's also being streamed on Facebook Live via the Bcat Facebook Government Facebook page.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is public participation. If there is anyone in the audience or online who's here to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Yes, sir, please come forward.
All right. Where should I?
Have a seat right here, and please give us your name for the record, and then whatever you'd like to say.
All right. So my name is William Seagard. I am a resident of Burlington, and I am in the cannabis industry. Obviously, in the course of my daily life, that comes up a lot with my neighbors, friends who I have in the town of why don't we have any businesses in town? So I decided I'd come and ask and try and figure out why don't we? Obviously, I understand that when the law was first rolled out, there were a lot of reservations regarding smell, signage, traffic, and a host of other issues that I think have all since subsided. So I'd like to kind of bring up the topic again in public discussion so that we can figure out, you know, if that's still the best course of action for Burlington as a community, and so that's what I'm here to do.
Okay. Briefly, just so you have the history.
Yeah.
The reason there's no recreational marijuana facilities in Burlington is that when the statewide vote occurred, the town as a whole voted against. So when the statewide, when it passed statewide, towns that voted where the vote was not in favor were given the option to pass a bylaw that would...
Yeah, and I'm familiar, I'm very familiar with the whole process and all of that.
That's why there's currently no recreational marijuana facilities in Burlington. In terms of if you want to revisit the issue, I think that's a general bylaw?
Yeah, it would be, it would, I think the first place to start would be with the Board of Select because they were, they were the original ones. They signed, I think it was a letter to the state, or they signed something.
Right, and then town meeting voted on the actual bylaw, as I recall.
Yeah.
So I think your starting point would be Select Board.
Okay, great. And she told me already I was in the wrong place, but I figured I'd make my voice heard.
Well, you wanted to have a public discussion, and this is a public meeting, so...
Yeah, great. All right, well, pleasure to meet all of you, and I will see you again, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else, either online or in the room, who would like to speak on a matter not on our agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Great. The Fox Hill School Building Executive Working Group will be meeting this Wednesday, November 8th, at 1:00 PM, and that will be virtual via Zoom. The zoning bylaw review committee will be meeting next Wednesday, November 8th, and that will be at 6:30, and that will also be virtual via Zoom. Next Friday, Veterans Day will be observed. That will mean that all town offices will be closed, and the following day, on Saturday, November 11th, at 10:00 AM, there will be a Veterans Day ceremony at the Burlington Town Committee.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one thing, that I was very happy to attend an unveiling today of the first outdoor art piece at Third Ave. It was a wonderful event, and there's a great new sculpture outside Twist Cafe. I encourage everyone to go and take a look at it, because, you know, I'm very invested in the sculpture park, but also just in terms of in creating more outdoor art spaces everywhere in Burlington. So it's very nice to see that kind of spreading around town. So go down to Twist Cafe and take a look at the sculpture, which is entitled "Just Been Kissed."
That was a frog.
Yes, it's a frog.
Yeah, I thought that was cute.
Yes, it is.
And Chair, if I may, just on the same subject, coming off the Rotary near Twist, and if you go down Third Ave to Fourth Ave, there's an electrical box that's got some, it's got some painting on it, some mural on it, and I know we've talked about this before.
Yes.
What's the policy with that? Can, are the property owners available?
Actually, we just had a conversation about this today. Third Ave paid an artist, because those are, those are on their property, and they had all of their electrical boxes painted. We actually have been in discussions with the art department at the high school about the possibility of having the electrical boxes that are on municipal property also painted. And it's still in the early stages, but we would love to see that move forward with the art department involved. I think we can probably only do it on boxes that are on our property, but perhaps if that happens, some of the businesses in town may decide that they want to do the same thing. Because I know there are, in Lexington, for example, when you just drive down the street, most of the electrical boxes are painted, and they're really fun and whimsical and a lot prettier than those plain gray boxes.
I noticed in Medford as well, they have a lot of paint.
There, yes, yes. So thank you for bringing that up.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any announcements? Okay. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we'll move on to Item 6, Administrative Matters. Our first item is Item 6A, a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 8, Section 8.1.0, 100-year floodplain district, by replacing the section in its entirety submitted by the Planning Board on behalf of the Conservation Department. I believe we have someone from Conservation to present?
Yes.
Mr. Keely?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So this is a zoning bylaw that regulates the floodplain in Burlington. It's a requirement that we have this bylaw as, as being a community that's in the National Flood Insurance Program. So FEMA requires we have the bylaw. They have, they've changed some of the requirements of it, various definitions, the designation of a floodplain manager in the town. It's basically just wordsmithing it. So the Massachusetts DCS has a program that is sort of a liaison between FEMA and the communities, and they came up with a model bylaw. So they came up with a model. I just basically took that model and, you know, made it into Burlington bylaw. It basically has pretty much everything the original one did, but it just does include some new language that is required. This will not change anything of the, the way things are done in the, in the floodplain in Burlington. Burlington, the regulations in the floodplain are really done in Massachusetts under the Wetlands Protection Act and the State Building Code. But so communities nationwide need to have a bylaw like this. So like I say, it's, it's, it won't really impact anything as far as the way things are done. It's just making sure that we remain compliant with FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program so that residents can buy flood insurance and file claims, and if, if we didn't do this, we'd be in noncompliance, and then residents in the floodplain would have difficulty buying insurance or getting claims reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. Keely, Zach, did you have anything you want to add?
Nope, I just wanted to thank John Keely for kind of taking the lead on this one, because this is definitely in his wheelhouse and not so much in mine, so I just wanted to throw that out there, and, you know, great working with him, so thanks.
Okay. Board members, any questions? So this is something that's going to go to town meeting, yes?
Mm-hmm.
And they're looking for a vote from us regarding the recommendation?
Um, this, yes, all of these items, so all of these things that have been submitted for the warrant, and all of them will require a recommendation of this board. At this time, we have not opened the public hearing.
Right.
So these are just discussion items, so kind of just gathering information, you know, and we will officially open the public hearing at the next meeting. We did not have time to get public notices out before this meeting, given the timeline for our town meeting schedule, but, you know, just opening them up, kind of getting the juices flowing, getting your heads in the game, I think, is, is important.
Okay, so actually, for a number of items tonight, that's going to be the case, they are discussion items. We're not going to vote on anything tonight. There'll be a public meeting at our next meeting, when hopefully there'll be members of the public attending and asking questions, as well as all of us will have more time to observe and absorb everything and ask questions as well. But since we do have members of ZBRC and Land Use here, did you have any questions you wanted to ask Mr. Keely?
No, this time.
Okay, anyone online? Who's a member of the committee? No, okay. So our next item, and we don't need to close anything, right? We're just moving on. Next item is Item 6B, a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulation Schedule by adding a new Section 4.2.5.11 related to automobile dealership use. Said new Section 4.2.5.11 to be permitted by special permit in the general business district by right in the water resource district and otherwise prohibited in all other districts. Submitted by Herb Chambers, 93 Cambridge Street LLC is the applicant. Mr. Vaughn, please join us. For the public, just for, for your information, this is an item that we have discussed previously. It went to town meeting but was withdrawn at that time because there was a need for more neighborhood feedback, and Mr. Vaughn, take it away.
Oh, I think that's a nice introduction. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So here tonight representing Herb Chambers, Mark Vaughn, with Remo Bronstein. So, yeah, this is the same article that we had presented before that never really quite made it to town meeting. If, I know you were at town meeting that evening. That same day, there was a communication sent from some residents in the area expressing some concern, questions, and comments about the proposal, so we thought it best to hit the pause button and postpone the article, allow us to have an opportunity to engage in a dialogue and a discussion with them and try to, you know, make them aware of what the proposal involved, and maybe more importantly, what it didn't involve. So we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago, I think, October 18th, neighborhood meeting, where I think maybe about 15 neighbors showed. We invited everyone that was, that had signed that, that letter. So had a good exchange, and not going to speak for any neighbors, certainly. I've learned my lesson in that regard to try to indicate, you know, but, but yeah, we, we submitted to come back for the January town meeting. The article is the same article as we had presented before with the same limitations and conditions on there in terms of, you know, capping the total square feet of the, of the building area to 20,000 square feet. So that's really, I didn't have any presentation or anything, Barbara, but it's really, you know, what we had presented before, and, you know, we, we think the proposal has a lot of merit to it. I guess I would be hopeful that those of you that might have supported it before would continue to support, and maybe those of you that, that didn't might look at it more favorably. So would appreciate your opportunity to engage in that discussion with you, so.
Thank you. So am I correct in understanding that there are no text changes at all?
I'm sorry, no.
No text changes at all?
From?
From the previous submission?
Correct.
Okay.
Other than one typo, I think.
Okay.
I think at the end, it says, it said parking purpose before, and now it's parking purposes to be, yeah, so.
Okay. I'm going to see if the board has questions, but first, I also wanted to thank you for presenting this in this format, because I think it's important for all of us and the public to recognize that what we're voting on is a text amendment.
Right.
We're not voting on a site plan at this time, or a building design, or landscaping, or anything else. We're voting on this. So thank you for restricting your presentation to this. And board members, anyone want to ask some questions? Bill?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. The last time I abstained because I didn't have enough information, the question I had was, I think we're going to ask Town Council if the Board of Appeals could increase the 20,000 square feet.
The Board of Appeals can make changes to any numeric value in the zoning bylaw.
So that, the answer is yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other board members? Okay, any committee members, ZBRC or Land Use have questions?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. So again, you'll be back at our next meeting.
Yes.
At which point we'll open the public meeting, and there'll be more discussion, I'm sure.
Great.
Okay.
Forward, all right, thank you all.
Thank you. Next up is Item 6C, a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2, Definitions and Article 4, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulations to define and regulate fitness studios and fitness centers, submitted by Burlington Equitable LLC. Welcome, and if you could give your names for the record, please.
Of course, my name is Edward Paree, it's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of Burlington Equitable Limited Partnership and Core Development and Management. And with me is Steve Vazena from Core Development, who is a franchisee of Planet Fitness. So the purpose we're here is to discuss and propose a bylaw change. Planet Fitness is looking to relocate its current facility at, on Ray Avenue. The Bauer Hockey Experience has given up some of its space at the property at 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension. When we took a look at the zoning, we realized that fitness centers are limited to 5,000 square feet, so we approached the concept of increasing the size. So that's the text of the bylaw amendment. I'll have Steve run through a very quick presentation we put together about Planet Fitness and the, and the two sites.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us here. I want to keep this brief, respect everybody's time and whatnot. This is really important to me personally. I grew up in Billrica, you know, and, and I grew up part-time in Burlington. I remember this location as a star market at one point, actually, and I remember going to Building 19 with my grandmother, and she would let me have coffee with the little sugar cubes in the back, and I was like eight. It was, I have a lot of great memories in this town. My mother grew up here, went to high school here, so it's a little bit closer to home for me. We do own, Core Development owns 70 locations throughout New England and as well as Washington State, so we're a pretty large franchisee for Planet Fitness. We own the surrounding Planet Fitness locations in Billricka, Wilmington, Reading, those locations as well, so we're familiar with the area, of course. And we purchased this location last November from the previous owner, who was another franchisee, and, you know, our goal here is really just to make sure that we bring the high-value, low-cost fitness access to everybody in town, and we don't think the current location is the best, is the best representative of that, and we really want the opportunity to increase the state-of-the-art offerings that we have in our modern gyms by no stretch as the Ray Ave. My grandfather lived on Sari Circle in Woburn, he was a member there for years, and, you know, I wanted to upgrade it, so. Going on a little bit there, here's the current location. As you can see, it is zoned industrial. We're a grandfather nonconforming use here because it is also limited in square footage. This location is actually 25,000 square feet with about 18,000 square feet of usable gym space. You see there what our hours are, Monday through Thursday, 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Friday, 5:00 to 9:00, and Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 to 7:00, and that club there has been open since September of 2007. Thank you, Caleb. The new location would be at the Bauer Hockey Experience. The Bauer Hockey Experience tentative plan is to shift that to the left in a smaller footprint, so they would still be operating, but our location would be the facade where they, they are. We do have 53, 100 roughly, members that would be transferring over there. This is about 17,500 square feet of updated, modern, state-of-the-art gym space. And from a parking perspective, from an overall business perspective, the visibility is, is great. It's easier access to our members, closer to our members in the community, definitely better ADA accessibility. You'll, you'll see an improved layout amenity and offerings. I know this is not obviously a planning board hearing or site plan hearing, hearing or anything like that, so we didn't get into that detail, but the other big thing, too, is the, the parking availability here. So you see our current parking, and our current parking, that's actually the Ice Palace parking down on the left. Our current parking is that very small sliver right there. So, you know, the increased parking would definitely be beneficial, not only to our members, but I think to the community as well. 159, the current number of spaces, 58. There's 159 available spaces in the new location, which is obviously an increase of over 100 spaces. And I did just want to call out, because it's something we're very proud of on the next slide there, you know, our high school summer pass impact. We're really proud, Burlington was one of the most successful high school summer pass programs in our portfolio, which is really awesome. As you can see there, we offer every summer, we offer ages, teens ages 14 to 19 to workout free at any of the Planet Fitness locations from May 15th through August 31st, and we saw 994 local high school students join our club, and, you know, the reason this popped out was because we looked at our check-in data and things like that, and we were actually a little surprised because the, our check-in date is always the most in January, February, March, right? New Year's resolutions. Here, it was actually the most in some of the summer months because of the teens coming here, so we're really proud of that as well. I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. So my understanding is that the text amendment that we're considering tonight is basically changing the square footage that's allowed for this type of facility in this location, correct? Or in this zone?
Yes, it's a little bit more complicated than that, so just to give some context. So the reason why fitness, the fitness centers are only allowed, currently, fitness centers are only allowed in 5,000 square feet is because we wanted to preserve the town center. We didn't want the town center to be able to have fitness centers that were huge warehouses, boxes, and so that's why we restricted it. So this zoning amendment will kind of split that use into two types of things. So there's fitness centers, which are larger, like what they're proposing, and then there's fitness studios, which is kind of the 5,000 square feet, what we like to see in the town center.
Fitness together.
Fitness together, yoga studios, that type of thing. And so what they propose basically is to kind of add the fitness studio definition, change the fitness center definition, and then update the use table. So that fitness centers, so that's fitness facilities that up to 20,000 square feet, will be allowed in the BG zoning district. So if you can imagine our zoning map, Caleb, I don't know if you can, if you're like, you can, what's that? Yeah, I do. I do have it memorized. It's, but, any, so places like the mall and down by Sammy's, down in Quinier, and, you know, any red, if you look at our zoning map, anything in the red is, would make, would allow for that use. So most of the mall road area, and then would allow for that use. So that's just kind of the context.
Right, and then studios would be allowed in other areas, but specifically, we're trying to keep those in town center, keep large ones out.
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Board members, anyone have questions on this? Bill?
I have a question. I want to leave it to somebody else to take half a question, though. Anybody? So if you could go back to the zoning map real quick for me, and you're saying the red is allowed or excluded?
Allowed. It's allowed in the red, but this zoning map does not show the town center over there, so don't worry, don't worry.
So if, yeah, if you just include, if you, if you enlarge that up a little bit, so you can see the town center.
Oh, yeah, he wants you to go in, yeah. So this area, it would not be allowed.
Yeah, from up here.
This, this area would only allow fitness studios.
Okay, keep on going down to the red just for a little bit for me, if you now, up, yeah, go up, yeah. So now we're going up, that's going up, where's that?
Cambridge Street right here.
Coming down Cambridge Street?
Cambridge Street.
Corporate Drive.
Okay, where's, look where town center ends there, what's?
Oh, town center ends way further up, Bill.
The high school.
Yeah, just the high school.
That is?
Yeah, so if you...
Bedford Street, they were down around there, yeah.
Yeah, so that where, is where that would.
So is the piano?
The piano is in the town center.
Okay, so it's out of there, okay. So we go down past that, and across from the high school is the plaza there with the old Metro Bank.
120 Cambridge, it would be allowed, fitness centers would be allowed there.
Oh, that's...
Right across from the high school.
That's BG.
That's a BG's own, I guess, yeah. Yep, yep.
Could you scoot up just a little bit more, thanks?
Up higher, this way.
Just keep going the same direction, the other way, sorry.
Other way, so he wants to see south more.
Go in, okay.
Yeah. So all across from Corporate Drive.
All right, let me do this, let me pull up, where I can show town center.
So, yeah, anything in the red, and Bill, anything in the red would not...
Would be, is allowed.
Would allow, would allow 20,000 square foot fitness.
And this is how many feet?
Up to 20,000 square feet.
But is Planet Fitness is proposed? 17, but we're not voting on that right now.
Okay, no, but I'm just saying it's 17.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I mean, mall road area.
So this, can you, can you keep pushing that up so we can just see how, where else the red comes up?
Yeah, but I mean, I just, the lot sizes down, and there's some areas where it would be allowed.
Like over to the right, there's Sammy's, right, over there's Sammy's and Domino's, way over to the right is, that's where that is, very, keep on going.
Oh, yeah, over there.
Right over there, yeah.
Yeah, but those lots are 20,000 square.
Yeah, those lots are tiny.
Those are tiny lots.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, there are always going to be some lots that don't make sense.
Don't make sense.
I mean, you could do a smaller gym there, like 10,000, but.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so.
Bernie, did you have a question?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone from ZBRC or Land Use have questions?
You just need to speak into it, you don't need to push the...
Just pull it closer.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
So just a question, as far as the format goes, I don't know if this is your, you mentioned, but it seems, if I'm understanding correctly, it's a little confusing line, it's a fitness facility, which has nothing across it, and then you have two subsequent categories.
Right, we're going to get rid of the one that says fitness facilities, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean...
Yeah, if I can, through the chair, obviously. What we did was, you already defined fitness facility, so we were taking out all of those use categories in all of the zoning districts, and then we created a new fitness center with the appropriate use categories, and then created a whole new definition for fitness studios, which is 5,000 and less, so you have fitness facilities broken down in the fitness centers, and so that's why we eliminated, we deleted those uses, and then we separated, we felt that that was the...
Do you mind my recommendation that we delete that line entirely?
Or we actually, I would, if we put a strike through the whole line.
Strike through.
Right? Does that, I feel like that's clear, right?
Yeah, I think it's a format thing, because they don't want it to be like, well, it's allowed, it's not allowed, because now it's a new state, so it should have Yes, Are or No's next to it, so it should really be eliminated.
Right, I agree. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else have questions? No, okay, so again, this, you're going to be back before us in two weeks when we'll open the public meeting, and...
Actually, sorry, one question. Would this include a height restriction?
It would, so the BG zoning district has its own height restriction already, so...
Just because thinking about those smaller lots, 20,000.
Yeah, so off the top, so the BG zoning district, I don't know, I should know it off the top, but it's like 30, I'm going to say 30?
I think 30, it's not 60, all right?
BG, yeah, it is 30.
Yes, all right.
Yeah, see? Okay.
Good.
All right, that was that. Thank you so much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up is Item 6D, a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 2, Definitions and Article 5's Dimensional Requirements as they pertain to accessory use regulations relating to the RO One Family District, excuse me, One Family Dwelling District, submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee. So we are lucky to have ZBRC with us tonight, so I'm going to let you take it away.
Thank you, just...
Thank you, just, Sherry, Alice, Chair of the ZBRC.
Sherry, just pull it.
Pull it really close.
She can't, that's restricted.
Here, move over. All right. So tonight, we're just proposing this article or kind of segmented article. And the purpose of this, the intent in proposing this is really to clarify the existing regulations relating to what accessory uses require from it, and also to define some of the related terms a little bit of that. So there's been some confusion recently about zoning for accessory uses, meaning sheds. They've been coming to, so we were, for variances. And this kind of got us into thinking about how we can better define things and regulate things so it's just clearer. Not really changing the Nebraska changes other than really clarifying what needs to permit. So the article's broken into three sections. The first are some new definitions that weren't in existence, setbacks, things like that. Some existing definitions that are going to be amended, that's the second section. And the last part is the use regulation table, which we're remending, and which really, right, what's in the paragraph right above the use table, which is the crux of all this is to what needs to permit. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, I think we can get more into it.
Staff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not at this time, thanks for the explanation, Sherry. I think that, you know, as we digest it more, we can talk, get into greater detail at the next meeting, but yeah, thanks.
Board members, questions, thoughts? Ernie, please go ahead.
Just a comment as the planning boards representative on our zoning bylaw review committee. We spent a lot of time on this, and the big thing, I think, is that we had some very good input from the inspector of buildings. Since he's the one who has to interpret this and enforce it, I think that worked out very well.
Yeah, and also actually, we just, and to the farmer's point earlier that she asked me, we did have comments from town council on a couple of the definitions, so we've found her input as well. And I am scheduled to appear before the zoning board of appeals next Tuesday, which was supposed to be last month, but that meeting got postponed, so I don't have, we have a member of the zoning board of appeals on our committee, so we've had that input, but I'm going to get the rest of the board's input as well too, because they're the ones dealing with a lot of these variances.
Okay, thank you. Just, Ernie, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Bill, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, Ms. Ellis, I'm looking just at Section 2.2, the building height. And what I noticed was that it says not included are spires and cupolas, which made me think is then the height of those because they're not, you know, part of the, you know, gambrel roof or eaves or ridges. Would that be an unlimited height for a spire or a cupola?
It's currently that way in the definition now, so that would be?
It'd be a building inspector question, because I don't know the answer to that. Because for the building height, it's not. But there may be a specific, different building code or something that would limit those. So it's a good question to ask. Park would probably, hopefully, have the answer.
Great, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I had also told Sherry before the meeting that I thought we needed to spend a little bit more time on 2.19, structure, because I felt that this was a little overly comprehensive. There's a whole lot of things that could fall into that definition, and I'm not sure, we might need to tighten it up a little bit, but we'll work on that.
Yes, that's our main goal for next week. We left off with that definition.
Okay. Is still going round and about with that one. I just submit it as a clean copy for now.
Great.
That's definitely not one.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on committees here or online that have questions? Okay, so then we will discuss this further at our next meeting. Thank you, ZBRC. Next item up is 6E, a discussion petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 2 definitions, to add a definition for middle housing submitted by the planning board. So this is something I've really been pushing Liz to work on, and she has put this forward. I think we still have a lot of discussion to do, but this is a starting point. Liz, take it away.
Sure, so Caleb's bringing it up. So this is the definition of middle housing from the website, The Missing Middle. So for those of you that don't know, middle housing is a term used for housing that is not single-family and housing that is not large-scale multifamily. So it's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, smaller-scale buildings that are kind of more in line with, in form with single-family homes. And the reason why I think that, you know, Madam Chair and I have kind of thought that this was a good idea is because, you know, in all of the data that we've done, we did the housing needs assessment. The state is doing a lot of push on this, you know. There is, there's a need for housing, and one of the things that we are missing, the town has done an absolutely fabulous job of permitting larger-scale multifamily buildings. You guys are like stellar with the state and everything. You guys have a lot of single-family homes. But if you don't want to live in a large-scale multifamily and you don't want to live in your, you know, 2,000-square-foot home, there's really no place else for you to go in the town. And so by putting this definition forward, I think it's just kind of getting the people talking, getting people thinking about it. The next step would be, I think, really looking at creating either an overlay, an overlay district or tweaking the use table somehow to kind of allow this use in certain areas of town.
Thank you. So yes, I did, I, this is something I've been asking staff to work on. This is just the definition, so it leaves a lot of questions unanswered. When we get to the point where we're actually creating zoning, then we're going to need to address issues such as number of units per acre, so that we can control how large these developments get. I have very strong opinions about that, but they're only mine and something that we're all going to have to discuss. This is really just the first step by creating a definition so we can start talking about what is middle housing. And then after we decide what it is, we can figure out where it might be appropriate in town. So, any other questions?
For Steph. Are there any examples of middle housing that already exist in Burlington now?
Sure, so right now, there are condos that are next to the museum, the, what can I think of?
Historical?
Historical Society Museum, they're right there.
Bedfitting Cambridge.
Yeah, and then there are some that are kind of in between, right next to Kinder Care on Cambridge Street. They kind of look like townhomes. They're very close to the edge of payment. So those are, I would say, some examples of middle.
And then I think also on Muller Road, isn't there a development on the right?
The Reserve, they call it.
Reserve, I think that might qualify as well.
Yes, those, I believe, are in the PD, and they are condo units, whereas the rest are apartment units. Those are the condo units that were part of that.
But that's a similar look and feel as?
How about behind the, the books there? And then up, up Shaw's a little bit?
Yeah.
Yes, with Shaw's.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that most of the development, most of the housing that has been developed in the town center, people would consider middle-type housing.
Yeah, except perhaps there's a couple of larger flats, yeah.
Well, most.
Most, okay.
So what are you going to call single-family homes that are like?
They're just single-family homes.
Just single-family, okay.
So we have that now. And we do have some middle housing, just not very much. And there is an enormous housing crisis, and, you know, we want to be able to provide housing as appropriate. But what I was trying to achieve with this is I want to, I want to address the need that Burlington has. And I don't think Burlington has a need for more large apartment complexes. We have a lot of that, and we have a lot of single-family homes. But these middle housing options can be great for people who are downsizing or young families who may not be able to afford a single-family home. And they can provide, you know, this, I'm getting a little ahead of it, but they can provide a very nice transition between a business district and a single-family home district. So there are areas in town where it could be beneficial to both the residents that already live there, the ones that want to live there, and the businesses nearby.
Yeah, I think, I think Burlington is kind of unique, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know other communities that I've lived in have multiple residential districts. Burlington only has actually three, as far as I know, apartments, that basically?
There's three, and then there's one district that there's no parcel that's in it. Don't ask me that.
So there's, normally, normally in a town, you'd have a single-family district, then a multifamily district, two and three-family houses.
Right.
And then something would be, you know, apartments or whatever.
And we're missing that middle.
Burlington, we go boom, bang.
Right, we're missing that middle piece.
Good point.
So that's what this is aimed at. Are there any questions from either more board members or from ZBRC or Land Use? Oh, Bill?
Madam Chair, the only, the only comment I would say is that this is separate from MBTA communities, right?
Yes, MBTA communities would probably require a density greater than this.
More like apartments, correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question. In the definition, how would you define within a walkable community?
So basically in a neighborhood.
Walkable neighborhood.
In a neighborhood. So if you're deep in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood, I don't think this is someplace that's appropriate. I feel like middle housing, and this is actually part of what was a recommendation of the master plan, is that this middle housing type is really good for areas that, where you have, that are kind of the middle areas, the transition zones between commercial districts, then you would have your middle housing, and then you have single-family housing. So it kind of creates that buffer, and the middle housing is a little bit more dense, but, you know, it's, you can, you can walk to the commercial areas. It, you know, adds vibrancy and customers for those businesses.
And it can even act as a buffer between the single-family homes and the businesses, because it's more desirable than having a business right next door to you. And then the people who live there have the ability to walk to stores and buses and?
Sort of like they back in CVS. If you go up skilled, it's not a single-family home, and then you could walk to, let's say, CVS.
Right. Yep. Okay, Sherry, please.
So I love the idea of the middle housing because we're, we're obviously, I agree with everything that you said. I just have thoughts and questions as far as, this is just a definition at the moment.
Right.
You have definitions for two-family, three-family. How do those definitions fit in with this? And should there be kind of a review of all the housing definitions?
Probably, because they might, maybe we can wrap them all into one.
Yeah.
And maybe two families and three families are part of middle housing.
Right, it's like a, you know, subcategory.
Yes.
And then the same thing as we and our committee have been trying to do when we do definitions, we try and kind of lump them together.
Right.
Look at the parking, we put all the parking, so that parking was the first word, because we do it alphabetical, parking, detached, part of, attached. So the same thing with housing, two-family housing is underneath T. So, you know, are you really going to look down there and it's going?
Yeah.
And underneath M, so.
A good point.
We tried to think about it and?
We can put them all under H.
So G, we have housing, and then, you know, all the, it's under there, because when you want to look up what housing is, you go to H.
Right.
It's like, right, in a sense. So that's my only thought about, at some point.
The formatting of it is important, and I think what we were going to do with this is, we haven't gotten there, but we have to. This is sort of to start the discussion. But yes, before we actually bring it forward, we're going to need to make sure it fits properly. Yes, thank you. Okay, anyone else, questions? Okay, moving on.
All right.
Are we?
We're on item F.
F.
Item F, wireless bylaw update.
F is a discussion petition to amend and adapt, excuse me, update Article 8, Section 8.4.0, wireless communication facilities of the Burlington zoning bylaw submitted by the planning board. Steph, I'll let you take this one.
Madam Chair, so this is a 17-page bylaw that I, we had, Kristen had actually asked our town council, Lisa Mead, to, to start working on. And so we, she actually, she gave it to me. I said, Lisa, can we bring it to January? Because I feel like it's a, it's a good time to do zoning amendments. Our current wireless commute bylaw hasn't been updated since probably the 90s. FCC rules have changed, the federal government has changed their rules regarding these things. So what Lisa Mead did is she contacted a wireless expert in the state who's also familiar with these rules and regulations. She took our current rules and regulations and kind of expanded upon them. And so kind of highlights of this, I'm not going to scroll down because it's too verbose and, you know, you don't, you know?
Not in this venue.
Not in this.
We'll have, we're only going to have to read it eventually, but not now.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we, it starts out with the purpose, so you have the purpose of, you know, the bylaw. So things that are important, regulate siting relative to visual and aesthetic concerns, encourage screening and camouflaging, minimize the overall number of facilities and structures, so encourage colocation, you know, cite them below ridge lines. So basically, any new wireless communications towers are allowed by special permit and site plan in the wireless overlay district, which we currently have. However, these, the wireless overlay district now has its own special, it has special, its own special permit criteria separate from our kind of regular special permit criteria. And some highlights of that are, you know, again, aesthetics, benefits to the town, a lot of them are similar to the general special permit requirements. But, you know, it requires, you know, view of the particular characteristics of the site and surroundings you guys need to take into account for. And it also requires that the applicant provide, you guys review potential hazards due to radio frequency energy, operations, fall risks, traffic, and other relevant things, so additional criteria. It requires that any new towers be monopole only. Not, again, same as before, not to be erected near any residential properties within a distance of 200 feet, which we've dealt with in the past. You know, keep vegetation, ba, ba, ba. You know, keep vegetation, ba-ba-ba.
We have to take time to actually view, so we don't need to try to summarize it right now because we, again, we're just opening it. This was actually written by town council?
Yes, so she actually wrote it for the town of Newbury.
Okay.
And so that was the first, and so they have adopted that. And so this is, she took that language.
And adapted it for us.
And adapted it for us. The only other thing that I do want to highlight is that this bylaw, in order to comply with FCC regulations, it creates a thing called an eligible facilities request. And so what that means is that if you are a wireless carrier and you're swapping out your equipment, if you are within the parameters of an eligible facilities request, you don't need to come to our board.
And that's defined?
That is defined in our bylaw.
Okay.
An attorney party can probably speak to that. If he, oh, no, he's not, he's not here, but...
Okay.
He's well aware of all of that stuff. So basically increases in height of a tower by more than 10%, adding anything that is greater than like 20 feet outside of the width of the tower. And so there are parameters by which.
Okay.
So that's high level.
All right, it's a lot to absorb, so I'm not going to have any questions tonight because I have not absorbed it.
Yes, it's very technical.
It is. Is there anyone who did have questions tonight?
No.
We do have Sally Willard online, raise her hand, let me unmute.
Sally, please go ahead.
One moment.
We're going to unmute you, Sally.
There should be a request on your screen now.
All right, thank you. Just a question about the presentation. Well, we have something that shows us a comparison of the old versus the new.
The best.
Otherwise, you know, people are going to go, okay, well, this is what we have, this, where are the differences? Just, just wondering. Thank you.
So through you, Madam Chair.
This is an entire replacement, so it's, it's, it's kind of a little bit like apples and oranges. So, you know, I, I can try, like, I wouldn't...
Actually, I don't think we should try.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it doesn't make sense. It's not really changing the original bylaw, it's creating a completely new one. And it needs to be reviewed like a brand-new thing. Right. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I think also that you're going to have to do a lot of PR with it. Not that everyone who's, who's going to be voting about this is going to have a clue what's in the first one, but just, you know, kind of some, here, you know, here's a table, and here's what's in this one, and here's what's new. You know, just something that gives people some idea of, we're not, we're not being overly, overly restrictive or egregious, you know, we're simply complying with the rules as they are today. That's, I think that's where you're going to run into issues, is people saying, well, how do we know what we had? And they won't want to read what we have and won't want to do a line-by-line comparison. So I just think that it's important to give people something that says to the effect of, this is what we have, this is what's new, and by the way, this is not egregious. We're not trying to dictate the law to people.
Yes, Sally, I think you're right, and I think we will need to do that, but rather than doing it in terms of, here are the text changes, I think we probably need to present it more like, this is what would be allowed under this bylaw, and it's pretty much the same thing as before with a few changes.
Right, and I, through you, if I may, Madam Chair. So I did not have a time to do, make PowerPoint presentations for all of these before tonight's meeting. I know, right? But I do plan on having something for the public hearing. This is literally kind of like...
Opening.
Opening stuff up, just like throwing it at the wall, seeing if it sticks, and so that, but your point is well taken, Sally, so thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Or questions from the committees? Okay. Next up is item 6G, a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 5, general regulations to update parking requirements submitted by the planning board.
Yes.
This is something we've been talking about quite a bit.
It is, so let me... So this is, so Melissa, so this is, this actually all came about, actually, the two, the next two amendments came about out of our work with the consultants on the mall road rezoning initiative. And so they have done a lot of work on the zoning bylaw for that district, but from what we realized that their changes, or their updates, actually makes a lot of sense to adopt now, and they don't really have anything to do with this new district. So, you know, things like updating our parking calculations to be in line with, you know, national standards. We haven't touched them since, I've been here for eight years, I know Kristen hasn't touched them in a long time. So, you know, adding parking space and dimensional standards that are, that's in a table as opposed to kind of written out in a paragraph. All of our parking requirements that are currently in our zoning bylaw are written out, and so you kind of have to, and it's not even by use, it's kind of like a mishmash.
You have to read the whole thing.
You have to read the whole thing in order to truly understand and pick it apart. So I feel like, you know, if you're a business owner and you're trying to move to Burlington, looking at this table is a lot easier than looking at, trying to read and interpret what we have now. So talks about shared parking, which is kind of an update from what I did at the last town meeting, talks about, you know, off-site parking. We have structured parking standards, so if you're going to build structured parking, there are standards by which you need to do that. Design standards for, for parking structures, we don't have that right now. They're fair, they're pretty basic, there's three of them, and they're kind of universal, I would say, Melissa. We add requirements for bicycle parking.
Yeah, like the other, it's a lot to read and absorb, but it's something we actually have talked about a little bit more.
Yep.
One of the things I really like about this is that it defines requirements for parking lots, including things like how many islands you have to have and how many trees you have to have. And I think this will make our lives and staff's lives easier because businesses will come in, they'll read this, and before they come to us, they're already going to have their parking laid out the way we want it.
So it would be like a requirement, so when they see it, so we wouldn't have to suggest...
Right. So they will hopefully come to us with a plan that already meets our needs.
Yep. Yeah, that's one of the things. So there's landscaping requirements and all...
And curbing requirements, all of that.
And all that stuff.
We kind of are doing our, already, but we're doing it individually. And sometimes people come to us and they're surprised that we want these things, but now we'll make it quite clear from the beginning, and I think that will make things go more smoothly.
Right, and I think, you know, this is mostly going to apply to, you know, newer buildings. Like I think about, you know, buildings on Cambridge Street and down on Windmere, like, they're not going to be able to comply with this for parking, but, you know, newer buildings.
Right. If they were to knock down the building and redo it, they would have to comply.
Yeah, Melissa, did you have any, did I miss anything on this one?
No, Melissa, economic development. Thanks for having me, Liz. Yes, so I feel like part of this has been, you know, we talked a lot about the modernization of the zoning bylaw, and this helps to elevate it and then signal to the development community what we expect from them. And it also, I think, from, based on, you know, the work we've done today, kind of updates the parking requirements so that they do fall more in line with current analysis of what the demand is for uses, and that is more standardized. So I think in many ways, the development community would appreciate this, even though it, so it does tell you what you need to do versus coming in with a baseline, not knowing what the planning board wants, and now this helps to guide them, so that's really the intention.
It's going to make things easier. I agree. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the board?
A couple.
Yes, Jess.
Based off what we just discussed about fitness studio versus fitness center, are you going to define those in here?
Are they?
Because we just have fitness club.
Yeah, I need to, I need to like mesh all of these things.
Yeah, and like I don't see pet grooming under services. I'm just thinking of things we recently approved and talked about.
As we go through this, you know, because we can't read it all tonight, and some of us haven't had a chance to read it thoroughly, even if those of us who did, we're going to do it again, feel free to send your comments, either call or send them in written form to staff before our next meeting so that when we come back on the 16th, we have most of our comments already incorporated. Right? Okay.
Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that's jumped out at me on these, this one, and thanks, it's really comprehensive, great job, was the ice skating rink. And I kind of was just quickly comparing that to, you know, other recreation facilities where you had that as a point four-two, when you see everything else in the single, almost double-digit numbers per thousand square feet. And the other one I kind of jumped out at me was all these retails have superstore next to them. And I was wondering, I didn't see it defined, but again, I have to look at it, you know, a bit more in detail what's defined as a superstore versus if you had, you know, let's say, a pet supply, which is not a superstore, we define that in two separate ways. Yeah, that's the only comments I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gaffney. So I, at this point, I'm kind of, I've kind of submitted everything with the expectation that we're going to kind of like...
Be fine.
Right. So all of this stuff, please email me and remind me and...
Right, it's a lot, and I'm asking, no, so, so as a board, we all have way more homework in the next two weeks than we usually have. So I'm sorry about that, but you have to get your comments in to staff before the next meeting because then we'll have a tightened-up product to look at by our next meeting. I'm not expecting you to give comments tonight, you need more time to look it over. Do you have any comments or questions? Anyone else?
I don't.
All right, moving on to item H. Right? Yes. Item 6H is a discussion, petition to amend the zoning bylaws, updating and modernizing Article 2 definitions in Article 4, Section 4.2.0, principal use regulation schedule submitted by the planning board.
Do you, I'm not connected to the P drive.
Is this under zoning amendments?
Um, yeah, sorry, my computer.
So Liz is going to take this away, but my understanding is that we need to bring our, the text of our bylaw into this century, and that's the main purpose of this one.
Correct. So again, this is working off of some of the kind of helpful codification and updates that the consultants that we, that have been working on the mall road corridor have done to our bylaw. We asked them to integrate those things into, we asked them to integrate that into our bylaw, so they are updating everything. All, so anything that is specific to that district has not been included in this. This, these are just updates that we felt like were useful for the entire town. So the way that you kind of need to read this is you need to look at the use table that is very colorful, I take off the paperclip, you have two documents. You have the use table, the column in red is what we currently have. And if you notice, a lot of the uses are very verbose and very specific. And so the intent of this is to take a lot of that verbiage, truncate it into a kind of a couple-word designation, and then all of that extra verbiage goes into the definitions.
And then there are a lot of things that we can take out, too.
There are things that, so that's the first thing, there's things that we are removing entirely. So, you know, I've removed things like dance halls, travel agencies, photographers, decorators, and stationers, retailers in grain and animal feed, that's a use that we removed, and, you know, photo processing. So the, the uses in this new use table that are bold are new uses that we've, that we've added. And some of these uses are, are new in that they're, you know, that they're more, more modern. So you think about like commercial recreation facilities, urgent care, collaborative workspaces, and so those are some of the additions. And then there's just a general kind of reorganization of things. So this is a lot to take in. I'm trying to tell you now how to read it. At the, at the top of this sheet, I have put the key, so it's kind of a lot of reading this and then going back into the definitions.
Why did, why did you remove travel agencies?
Because it's, it's kind of, I would consider it kind of just like a service use as opposed to having a specific use. It's, it would be, it would be pulled into just general service uses, you know what I mean? So what are some of the highlights?
There were some other things in there that were really weird and old.
One thing that was really helpful is the laboratory, the life science uses. If you look at our, I'm, for those of you guys that are online, I can't connect to the planning drive, and so I'm sorry, you can't, are you sharing?
No, I, there's too much to...
Yeah, can you share? So life science uses have been truncated to laboratory life science research and development, and then laboratory life science, commercial manufacturing. And all the, all the, all the language in the use table that poor Brenda had to read every time we were permitting, like, all of those labs.
Yes.
You wouldn't need to scale.
Yes. Again, this is another, we need to spend a lot more time absorbing all of this so that we'll be better prepared to discuss it next meeting.
Yes, and Melissa, did you have any?
Sorry, one more question. So like, you have, all these were listed in red, but then it's blank over here.
That's, that means that we're keeping it, we're keeping it as-is.
Oh, okay.
Keeping it as-is. Um, yeah, so if you look up at the top, Jess, it says, if it's scratched out, if it's crossed out, we're removing it, but then if it's just in red, existing use term remains.
But you have like one-family dwellings crossed out, but then you have it on the left as one-family dwellings.
I think that one of the things that was changed there was because of the case, but I also need to make sure that they're all consistent as well. Like, a lot of the case, like, do you know what I mean?
Oh, like bomb shelters, you capitalized, capitalized the S. Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a lot.
Yeah, good stuff.
It's all good stuff, it's all stuff that like, you know, our permitting is down, which is a bummer, but it also means this is the time we have to like...
Absolutely.
So...
Very good.
That's why we never got to it before. We're just too busy with...
Does your question, Bill?
I'm not, I'll say, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sheri? No? Okay. All right, so lots to absorb, again.
I have one question.
Yes.
So we'll have our ZBRC meeting next week, and any comments, can I send out to our comments? Send to me as well.
Please, if you could collect...
Do you want me to coalesce?
Yes, if you could collect the ZBRC comments and then give them to staff in aggregate, that would be better. So before we move on, I did want to just say, I want to thank our staff, they have been working really hard. Permitting is down, but they have not stopped working. This has been an enormous undertaking, and it's not done. So I want to commend both Liz and Caleb and Jen for all the work on this, and also thank Melissa for all of her help with it. It's an enormous undertaking, but it's something that we've needed to do for a long time, and we haven't had the time to devote to it until now, so I'm very grateful. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item seven on our agenda, matters of appointment. May I have a motion, please, to take items 7A, B, and C together for discussion purposes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7A, 7B, and 7C together for discussion purposes.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
I propose 5-0. Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.22, drive-through of the zoning bylaws, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Five Bank LLC is the applicant. Item 7B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.11, discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Five Bank LLC is the applicant. And item 7C is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Bank Five Bank LLC is the applicant. Welcome back, and please do state your names for the record before you begin.
Sure. Good evening again, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reemer Bronstein, representing the applicant, Salem Five Bank. With me is Matt Bombacy, who is a civil engineer with Bowler Engineering, was with me at the prior hearing, if you recall, and also we have John Kosinski as well, who's Vice President of Facilities Real Estate for Salem Five. So I know the prior meeting, we had an opportunity to present the project in some detail in terms of what we're talking about, and again, it's the property of 36 Cambridge Street. Salem Five has a bank branch there currently, which is rather antiquated and not up to today's standards in many respects, many regards. So an opportunity to reinvent that property and provide a more modern, updated facility. So when we were before the planning board... So, when we were before the Planning Board, we had some comments, requests that were made, which I think that we've really tried to address thoroughly and successfully, we feel, to, and I'm gonna have Matt maybe walk through the plan in a moment, but first and foremost, I think there was a request to provide some more landscaping than what we had originally shown. I think the comment was that there was a lot of manicured lawn area. Would be nice to provide some, some nice landscaping trees, ornamental shrubs and things of that nature. And also, if we could do something to maybe have, you know, non-invasive species and things like that. So, that comment was actually also echoed by the Conservation Commission, who we met with. I know Matt and John met with them last week, and there was a desire for us to incorporate a bio-retention rain garden along the riverfront component of the property, which we did do. So, I'll have Matt walk through that quickly. And then the other element that the board had asked is if we could do a little bit more on the curbing in terms of more granite curbing as opposed to what we're proposing before, which I believe was-
Batuminous?
Batuminous asphalt curbing. So, we have incorporated granite curbing throughout the property. So, Matt, do you want to maybe just kind of hit the high notes on the landscaping and what we've done to address that?
Absolutely. For the record, Matt Bombasy with Bowler Engineering. I certainly remember the board's comments last time regarding landscaping. I'm less than enthused. So, we did bring this to our landscape team and ended up more thorough landscaping plan. Landscaping, I think, primarily focused first along Cambridge Street, the street, the street facade along the, along the, along the road. So, five new street trees and I think it was twenty, about 22 shrubs along the, along the front, just to provide a full thorough buffer along the front there. Additionally, there was a comment regarding some shade trees within the parking area itself. So, I know there's two trees which are remaining and-
Excuse me, sorry. Could you pull the mic a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Shade trees throughout the parking area, so four new shade trees and a couple existing shade trees to remain. Also, some landscape shrubs and ground cover along, along the front of the building to dress up that area between the sidewalk and the building. We did get a similar comment from Conservation regarding landscaping, asking us about landscaping. And in one comment they actually had was the use of native plants and not variant plants, which I think this board kind of insinuated as well when, when we were here. So, with just a couple of exceptions, all the plants are all native species. The exceptions would be along the front, we wanted to use a columnar tree because of the overhead wires, but in general, all native plants. Conservation also asked us about using native grass seeds as well for irrigation, which I think this board actually mentioned. And we did do that. Again, I think the seed is, that we're proposing now is 75% native with one variant just for the turf reasons they wanted to keep that in.
Kind of trees are they in the front?
Uh, they are-
Cambridge Street?
Pin oak trees along the fringe.
What are they?
Pin oak trees.
Oh, pin oak, pine oak trees? Or, no, pin oak trees.
Pin oak.
And the shade trees are what?
They are red maples.
Okay. Nice.
The one comment we did get from Conservation was regarding stormwater. As you know, it's a redevelopment site and we're reducing impermeables, but they asked, was could we do a little bit more? I think I insinuated it a little bit at the, at the last hearing, but there's an area at the, the back left of the site where we're reusing existing catch basin. So, since we had that grassed area and we were using that already, it was, it seemed like a perfect opportunity for, for a soil-planted rain garden. So, we're proposing that along the back there, which will also have some shrub plantings within it. Additionally, we have the landscape island at the center of the parking area. Again, another opportunity the, the board asked for shrubs in the interior and, and Conservation asked for stormwater, so a similar, similar proposal there.
So, those are the main changes between last meeting and this. It's mostly landscape changes and the things that you did for Conservation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and the curbing as well, which-
The curbing, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we are, I had an opportunity to speak with staff today. I understand the board is not in a position to vote on this tonight. We are before the commission next Thursday. We're hopeful that these changes would be well received by them such that we could be back before you at your next meeting on the 16th, which sounds like it's gonna be a busy night. But to hopefully have a vote that evening, that would suit the board.
I think that's reasonable to expect. I have a question. I want to know if you gave any thought to reorienting the building. I know it's not something I can demand of you. I am bringing it up only because I really think it would be a benefit to your business. And I want to know if that was something you discussed further or if it's completely out of the question. I know I've received feedback from other people in town government that agree that it could be a benefit to your business. If you, even if, I know you can't move it to the far right corner, but even if you just turned it so that it was the long side of the building, is facing Cambridge Street, it gets you a lot more visibility from the street. It's, it-
Yeah.
It's not for my benefit.
No, and I appreciate that. We did, it certainly wasn't on deaf ears. I mean, I think part of this project is to heighten the visibility of the branch.
Right.
And, you know, I think we saw the renderings before, which, you know, we think accomplished that in the, in the present location as we've, as we've depicted the building. It, it is problematic because you can see the different easements that are coming through. There's one along the front that's running that way, and then there's one that's coming in to the right that is at an angle as well. So, those are all no-build areas. And then, you know, we are reducing the drive-through element of this building down from what, I think, three drive-through lanes today, down to, you know, the one drive-through lane. And, you know, it would be difficult to be able to do it without that drive-through lane, then going along the front of the building if we, you know, twisted the building around. So, you know, we, we feel that this does accomplish the objectives of providing an attractive building that's gonna look very nice from Cambridge Street. It'll heighten that, that visibility a bit and also provide a safe spot for people to, you know, I mean, admittedly, the vast majority of our customer base are gonna be coming by automobile still. So, it, we think it all, all works well, but I do appreciate the, the comment. It's not something that we just dismissed on a hand, so.
All right, thank you. Any board members have comments about what's being presented now?
Sure, just, just to thank the applicant that they listened to our concerns about the landscaping. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Come on, nice.
Just, did, did you say all interior burn now is granite? Is that what you said?
All granite curbing, interior.
Thank you.
We'll hold up well on those plows, Ernie.
It will. You'll thank me in 20 years.
Staff, I should have asked you previously if you had anything you wanted to add, and I forgot.
Nothing that you haven't already stated, Madam Chair. But, yeah, we're-
Okay. All right, so I think, as you said, we can't vote tonight because we're waiting for Conservation, but I, I imagine this will probably go pretty quickly when you come back in two weeks.
Great.
Thank you for reminding me. Is there anyone here in the audience or online who would like to speak on this matter? Oh, Melissa, please come forward.
Um, no, Melissa.
Turn off the mic. I don't, I think it'll drag over you.
Lucy, why don't you sit here?
It's a pretty long cord.
Melissa, economic development. I just wanted to say, you know, from the economic development perspective, we're always excited to see reinvestment from our existing businesses. Part of economic development is really kind of business expansion, attraction, and retention. So, it's always exciting to see that. I think what, you know, just to follow up on some of the board's requests over time, I, we have been looking at different areas throughout the commercial district, although this has been a little bit outside of kind of the Middlesex Turnpike and Mall Road. I think the orientation and some of the access, I'd probably want to press on the applicant a little bit and the connection to adjacent parcels. I understand it's, you know, more vehicle-driven, but if it's possible, I will probably look at my, talk to our town engineer, because I just want to understand if there is any site, siding of this building on this parcel that could be a little bit more creative and friendly to the overall environment. What we're looking at is supporting, you know, the visibility and the access, and I understand primarily it's vehicle, but yet creating and elevating kind of the urban design elements as well. So, how that happens is a work in progress. So, I think I just wanted to maybe remind the board where we're coming from as well on the economic development side, to look at the whole as well as the individual project. So, I'll be adding a few more things probably in my comments as well.
And when you do that, Melissa, I think it might be helpful for you, from your perspective, because you have a very different relationship with the business community, if you could explain why you think that bigger picture, how you think that would benefit this particular business, because I think that's what they need to know. If they, if what I'm suggesting, or I don't know what you're suggesting, but what I was suggesting is making a change to a plan that they probably spent quite a bit of money on, why would they want to do that? We'd have to explain to them what the benefit would be. And I think you're probably in a better position to do that than I am.
Yes, and I can put those in my comments.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to chat offline to you in terms of, you know, why it is that this design was the one that we arrived at. But, I mean, I guess what I would add, or just remind, and I know you had the-
Mark, can you pull that closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess what I would add, I know, Caleb, you had them up on the screen again, but just, you know, we have, I, this is gonna be a dramatic transformation of the existing building. The existing building, I think, is almost just like a, it's like a Cape House, right? So, the, the new architecture, I mean, we have, you know, a stone veneer base to it. There's cedar plank, hardy plank siding to it. There's kind of limestone elements that are there. And I think if you go to the other image, you can see that the one that's on the Cambridge Street side, you know, we, we do have a kind of a signature architectural element to provide that, you know, sense of arrival, if you would, that it is Salem Five Bank. So, but happy to chat with you further on it, but we really are trying to, as you know, I mean, they're, they're here, they want to stay, and they think that this works well for their, their needs, but, so.
I appreciate that, and I know I wasn't at the last meeting, so I feel like, you know, it's, you know, kind of my obligation under the Economic Development Office, and we're like looking at the context of the overall commercial district to, you know, kind of press a little bit more on how we can make sure this design, you know, fits into a longer-term vision, because it is a new investment and it will be here and we're excited for it to be here for a long period of time, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else either online or in the, in the room that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I am ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters, the Planning Board meeting of November 16th, 2023.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, zero, uh, five zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Let's see. The next item is item seven D, a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.14G, wireless communications facilities which are subject to Section 8.4.0 shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of Section 1.0 of the zoning bylaws, of the zoning bylaws, 27 Blanchard Road, Dish Wireless LLC is the applicant. Welcome. Please have a seat and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. My name's Brian Sullivan. I'm a program manager for J. Lee Associates, representing Dish Wireless on this application.
Okay, why don't you let us know what you want to do?
Sure. Just real quick, I think there was some leftover cards that came in in the, in the second notification. Those are the ones I think Catherine dropped off the others. That was, she made me promise to bring those up. It's funny, you mentioned earlier they had the, the amendment you were looking to do with the bylaws. I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if it mentioned there, but 6409 was the act, the amendment to the original telecommunications act. That's what it's speaking about with the-
Eligible facilities.
Eligible facilities, yeah. So, in a, in a case like this, we actually entertain submitting an eligible facilities application as part of this, but it wasn't in the bylaw. We actually were filing for a building permit, which pushed us this way. This does qualify under that if it was there. So, it's, we're not going 10 feet above the tower, we're not going 20 feet off the tower. So, we could have potentially submitted that application. But what we're here today to, we'll stick with the plan. We already submitted, right? We, Dish Wireless is looking to go on an existing 195-foot self-support tower. They have chosen 61 feet on the tower, because at the time, I think when this was originally designed, was the only, as you can see from that depiction, was the only location available. Obviously, not ideal for what they're looking for. This is also next to a water tank, so it kind of shields one side of, of the tower. Later in the, in the application, you'll see that it's three mounts on the tower, similar to what you see at the top of the tower. One antenna per mount. That is, this is built for future. You could have nine antenna on here, multiple remote radio units, which are the things, which are the units behind the antenna. Those are the radios. That's where the communication comes from. One hybrid cable would run from the RUs all the way down to the base station, which is on a platform. That's the mounts that would be on the tower, and those rotate to the azimuth that the antenna need. Again, similar to what's already on the tower. I gave snippets of what the equipment's gonna be proposed at this time. This doesn't show future equipment, just what they're, they were planning to do right now. The, the, the platform is going within the existing compound at the base of the tower, 10 feet off the tower, so it's nearby. That'd be on the, that'd be on the north side of the tower, but inside the existing fence line. There's already a shelter there, another, a couple other facilities that are, that were there. Some of them are vacant now because some of the stuff was removed from the tower, which I will, I'll come back to that a little bit. But that's basically the, the power and telephone, which they use fiber, is onsite, so they'll be pulling from onsite for that. So, but it actually does meet all the qualifications of an eligible facility. Obviously, Dish wants to use any existing facilities. As a matter of fact, we're responding to an RFP Monday for the water tank on the other side of town. So, the way they build out a network is to use all existing facilities first, generally get the highest height you can so you can cover more of the, of the area. And anything beyond that, you would try and fill in with things that maybe have to come to special permit, whether it's a rooftop or a, which take a lot more, you know, planning and approvals. But this, this communications facility was selected, obviously, because it was built for this. It's on town land. We did work with the town to get the application signed, so they're aware of it. But the town, it's, the tower itself is owned by Crown Castle.
By what?
Crown Castle International owns the tower. So, we have an arrangement with them, and with, you know, the town has signed off on the application.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty straightforward. I don't know if there's any questions about that.
There probably will be, but I'll let staff take a stab at it first.
Sure. So, so just to orient you guys, this is, this is a tower next to the, this is a wireless tower that is located next to the water tower, kind of in Mary Cummings Park on Blanchard Road. The, the owner of the tower leases the land from the town, and then the applicant here is with Dish Wireless, who's looking to add things on to the tower. Again, this is a prime example of why we need to update our bylaw. So, you know, again, hopefully, you know, I don't really have any other questions or comments, but this is the kind of thing that when you're swapping out equipment that's kind of similar in size, it's kind of one of those things that the FCC is saying, you know, if it's, within these parameters, it qualifies as an eligible facility, which is in the new bylaw, that it wouldn't need special permission.
Okay. So, is this additional equipment or are you replacing equipment?
This is additional equipment on the existing tower, yeah. Dish, Dish Wireless is not on the tower currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Board members, questions? Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess when you brought up the lease with the town, if there's additional equipment, is there an opportunity to increase the cost of the lease?
So, that would be a question for our purchasing agent, I, Whitney Haskell. I cannot claim to know any information about how the town manages the lease. I, so, from what I understand, the town leases the land to the struc, to the owner of the structure, and then this applicant is leasing space on the structure. So, I don't know what the terms of those leases are. I'm, I'm sure that, that Whitney has worked with, with town council to review all of those things, but I cannot answer that question right now.
I can mention that when I, we had to have the application signed for the Planning Board, I worked with the town administrator, town manager, and provided a copy of the prime lease that goes with this tower lease, so that he could review it. He had town council look at it, just to make sure, to make sure that everything was, you know, and in the, I outlined inside there, where the tower owner has the right to sublease without consent. without consent, but notification, which apparently they did do. So I didn't read into the, if every new carrier gets an additional, there is a lease in place, and I'd sent that over, so they do have, and council has looked at it. If there were additional rents, we'd probably kick in as soon as, as soon as this rent kicks in. I didn't read that deep. What I did read into was the, the right to sublease, just to make sure-
Sure.
I could show him that it was-
Sure.
It was okay to sign it with council's approval.
It just sounds like to me there might be a gap in, in the, in the lease review anyways, we go forward with these new leases, they can consider with new carriers that the, you know, the, the lease being, I don't know, maybe a thought on that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Makes sense or not, you know?
Yeah. I would say it makes sense to review it and see if it's, I don't know how, how long the lease with the tower owner is, you know? When that comes up for renewal, it should be-
A wireless expert is not yet.
Right, thank you.
Who was that? Crown Castle, is that what you said?
Yeah. The original, which is part of the reason why we're here, originally it was built by AT&amp;T, built the tower originally.
Right, it's a last tower, it's the old fashioned tower.
Correct. Yeah, so you, like you'd mentioned before, the next one that's built in town will probably be a Monopole. So it was built by, by AT&amp;T originally, and part of the reason why we're here is because when they did their special permit, they didn't include future use-
Right.
Which is what caught, got us caught in the, in the dragnet to come in here. Normally, when you do this, you, you encourage, right, in the original, to show for future growth, so-
Yep.
It's all, you, you want people to go here, so they're not building more towers. So because of that, they never included it, I think that's part of the reason why we're here. But then later, AT&amp;T sold the tower to Crown Castle as part of their rights under the agreement, so they didn't originally do, if they had, they probably would have put in for co-location.
Caleb, can you, does that go, does that picture go up, so I can see the bottom, no, the other direction?
Down toward the ground.
There we go. Here's my question. That is ugly. And it is right next to this beautiful Mary Cummings Park. It's actually in it, it's on town land, but it is apparently leased. Who do we talk to about this unsightly thing?
The building you're talking, or?
The building, the fencing that goes around it? What I would like to see, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that there's much that can be done with that ugly building to make it look better, but it could have a different fence and have some screening around it, so that when people-
Yeah.
-drive up to this lovely Mary Cummings Park, that's not the first thing they see.
I think first thing-
It's rusted, it looks like it's broken. I've, I've noticed it myself when I've gone there to walk. It's terrible. Who do we need to talk to about this?
Well, it, I think all the, all the property right in front of it, it's all town property. So, I mean, I don't think you'd have to, if you wanted to do, I think you have every right to do it, or you would-
Our fence and our, I mean, if it's leased-
Well, I mean, in front of it, you can do, I would think you could, that's your land, you can do whatever you'd like. Like screening, like vegetation or something?
I mean, it's something, I, I mean, ask the duty of, I don't know.
So it's the fence itself, though?
I think security is one of the reasons they want to see through fence.
Right.
That's what I've, I think when we've asked that question before, that's the answer we got back.
I understand that, but I think it doesn't have to be rusted and broken looking, and-
Sure.
But I do think, I would, I want to know who we have to talk to-
Get your Brenda in.
To talk about, first of all, replacing the fence with something that's not rusted and old and look broken. And also just something that we could do, even if it's landscaping outside the fence, so that it softens it a little.
Arbivides, or, yeah, something like that, that's usually what's used.
Yeah, so one thing, so I think we can all compare this to the water tower in the center town up the street here. There are huge arbivides that are in front of that-
Right.
-fence, and I think, so it's-
Yeah, that's true.
And so I think that it's something that-
Who planted those? Is that the lessee? Is that the town?
I don't know off the top of my head. They've been there for a while.
What color's better than that, look?
It might, it might, it might be, it might-
Let's find out.
That's actually the one we're sending the RFP response in on Monday. We're trying to get on this tower.
So who, how do we pursue this? Because I think in the past, excuse me, that was somewhat neglected. It was in an industrial area, but it's different now. Now there's a ball field directly on the other side of it, there's Mary Cummings Park-
It looks so much better with that tree.
Yes, and the trustees have come and taken over, and there's going to be more people coming there. We can make it look better.
Is that the other location, the first part of the fence is part of the communications tower, but then the fence continues, because that's the entrance to the water tank? So that whole length is sort of part the communications facility and in part the entrance to the water tank?
I'd like to take a walk down there if I, you know, before we approve it.
I've walked down there. And this looks, this is what we need to do. We need to have, and it's not expensive to plant arbivides, and they grow quickly, right? And they fill in, and they can hide all the ugly. I just don't know whose job it is to do that, and you're telling me it's not you.
Dish? No, it wouldn't be Dish Wireless, but, I know, one, I mean, one thing I would do, I think I wasn't here in 2009 when it was approved, but maybe there was approvals then with arbivides that maybe have since passed.
The site plan.
I would look into that first. I don't, I wasn't here for the original approval, but if there was supposed to be vegetation then, you probably could have-
Can we look at that?
That's where I would, that's where I would start.
Do that first.
Is 2009 you said?
I think that's when the original special permit was, 2009.
I have special permits from, yep, 2009.
It was in the eighties, actually, lady.
There was an, there was one from 1984.
1984.
There's one I see from southwestern Bell, Bell cell application from 1984. There's something from Yankee Cell Tel Company in October of 1983, and then we have two special permits in the summer of 2009.
So let's look over those and see if perhaps there was vegetation there, maybe it died and it got ripped out, maybe, maybe we can resurrect what should have been there originally, and if not, I'm going to ask staff to find out through town administration-
Oh, wow.
How we can try and get that dealt with.
Oh, yeah.
Because having the trustees take over that park is an enormous benefit, and I don't think that should be the first thing people see when they pull in.
I can, I will do some digging on that.
Thank you.
There was also a variance granted there.
Ernie knows all this.
Way back.
What were you saying, Ernie?
There was also a variance, I'm pretty sure granted, for something there, and maybe that had some conditions on it too, so you might want to look at that.
I would also want to look at the lease that the town has-
Yes.
With Crown Castle.
So we're going to give staff a whole lot of-
Homework.
Digging to do on this, it doesn't really affect your, what you're doing.
Yeah, I did send the original lease to the town, so they, they have that, the, the prime lease, the underlying lease, which is attached to every amendment that's done to, you know, that Crown does. And that would have been with, back then, with AT&amp;T, so.
But we have an example right here in town of how it can look better.
Yeah, the town owns that tower, so.
Right, the town owns this, owns this property too. Doesn't own the tower, but owns the property.
Correct.
Let's look at it, and staff has work to do, and that's fine, it doesn't have to hold this up.
So if it doesn't hold up, then it doesn't happen, right? So, right, so-
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Right, well, I mean, if we, if we don't hold it up, then, if we do hold up, then there's an opportunity for this applicant to go back to the owner of the tower, if it's required from the owner of the tower to put things in. That's the only thing I would just say, if we want to pause just for a second on this one. Because otherwise, if it's the owner of the tower that does it, then they, there's nothing before us to, to have them do that until the next time that comes in, another couple of years.
If it's the owner of the tower, and we have conditions on their original special permit already, that say they're supposed to be, have provided screening and maintain the fencing and all that kind of stuff, then I think we can, through the building department, address that-
Right.
-that transgression.
But if it's the owner of the tower, and there's nothing currently, and we want the owner of the tower to do it, there's nothing to hold up until the next applicant comes in.
Well, the building inspector can do something about it, if it's-
If it's already on, which we don't know yet, that's what I'm saying, that's why-
If we never conditioned it-
Then we condition it this time, and then you-
I don't think that we can condition a lessee of the tower.
Not the less-
This is a, a tower, a lessee on the tower.
I don't think Bill's talking about condition, having Dish Wireless do it, you're talking about the owner of the pole.
And the way that we, you get to him is to have this person influence it. And say, they're holding it up because we need to have this site, we, we would look at any other site, whether there's a person at that site that's leasing it or not leasing it. You know, we do have them required to put the landscaping, it's there.
Yeah, if somebody comes in and they're leasing space from-
Exactly.
-a property owner-
We do require-
And we want the property owner to do something, that's how we get to them.
That's correct.
So to speak.
Right, no, you're right. So that's why I just say if we can hold off and get the information-
Two weeks.
First, and then, you know, if it, communicate to the, to the property owners, we need this to happen, for this to go forward.
Well, a lot of times that, but, in this case, it is the town that owns property, so they only have the right up into that fence, so they actually don't have the outside fence. And, and the agreement with Dish has been signed for quite some time, as a matter of fact, they're already paying for it, so I don't know that Crown would act very quickly.
I don't know.
It'd just basically just be hurting Dish at this point.
They're already paying for it?
Oh, yeah.
They're already leasing the space.
Yep. So I basically, from my perspective, staff, myself and Caleb needs to, I want to look at the original lease with AT&amp;T, the original lease with Crown Castle, to look at that, if there's any stipulations in there. If that's the case, then I think that it would be town council that would be important, that would be writing to them, to Crown Castle.
Not the building inspector, no?
No, if it's, if it's, if it's a part of, if it's, if it's part of the original land lease, then that would be town council. And then if there was something specific in the special permit-
Okay.
-that would then go to the building department.
And then since the town owns the land outside of the fence-
I mean, I could also-
Do whatever we want.
I could also ask Paul to-
Right, what Bill was trying to figure out is the person who owns the pole, how much of the property do they control? Do they control, as this gentleman suggested, just up to the fence? Or do they have-
This might be, here?
No.
No, I don't, I'm on a third.
Sure.
Thank you.
This, see the equipment layout? Lease area. I don't think it tells us which-
Lease area line.
Is there any-
There's a lease area.
Hey, here we go. It's on page, it's on the second page.
That's what that's for.
There's something that says existing Crown Castle lease area. It's this dotted line right here.
So that's, that looks like the fence, doesn't it?
And that's, so the fence looks like it's outside of that.
Fence is outside?
So the fence, yeah, because this line right here, where it says existing Crown Castle lease area, is this dotted line that my cursor is holding over right now.
No, that's, wait, no, hold on, Caleb.
And where's the town?
What you're showing is what AT, is what Dish Wireless is looking to add inside.
No, yeah, he's, he's-
What it says, existing Crown Castle lease area.
What I'm looking for is the actual plot, I'm going to show you, here's town property, it's all town property.
It's all town property.
Okay, so.
But this looks like, so that, according to this, am I understanding correctly, Caleb, that the fence is the town's fence?
That's how I interpret this, with this saying existing Crown Castle lease area pointing directly to this area, which is directly next to, that if you follow where this is-
Right, and the fence is-
Bring this back to Google Maps.
Outside of that.
Outside of that.
Okay.
I can, I can pull that back up just for reference.
So we have the ability?
We have the ability, getting the town is the tricky part.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying to put those.
Yeah.
We'll leave this back up to show.
So with, with that, if that's the case, I think I would suggest we should vote on this tonight and pursue it through the town-
Yeah, I mean, I can reach-
To fix that.
Yeah.
So through you, Madam Chair, I can reach out to Brian White, who's our DPW director, and talk to him about, you know, how, how to do it. I mean, I don't, I think that they have a pretty good budget, it's not, you know, talk to him a little bit about what are, what are some options, or something that we can do.
Probably, I, I don't know if arbivide is the right thing, something that doesn't require a lot of maintenance-
Maintenance, salt, pollen, and all that good stuff. So just, I can, I can definitely reach out to the powers that be within town to see.
Yeah.
You can see based on that photo too, there were clearly trees cut down in front, so it's a matter of who cut down those trees.
Oh, yeah. Boom, boom, boom. Boom, boom.
I think we kind of solved it, I think that fence was always there, as part of the water tank area.
Oh, yeah.
And then they just went inside of the area.
Got it.
And I'm just going to put a caveat here, as I look at, and you were looking at Sheet A1, if you look here, it says proposed fiber vault to be utilized by Dish, and that's outside of the lease area, right?
The fi, yeah, it's, it's under the, the easement of the-
Under an easement.
Well, that, that's where the, that's where all the telco comes in from.
Yeah.
So there's an easement to get telco from there.
Or somehow, so.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so I'm comfortable moving forward with the understanding that, you know, we're going to have to appeal to the powers that be on the town side-
Yeah.
For a little face flip.
Yeah, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to propose public hearing on this matter?
Okay.
Do you want to ask?
Do we have to ask? Sorry, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
But, yeah, but I was going to have one more question after this.
Seeing no one, please go ahead.
Okay, great. So what we did find out after this had started was, a lot of equipment's been removed from the tower. So there is higher available rad centers than the 61 feet that it's on now, it doesn't provide much coverage, obviously, in the water tank in the way. If, if we could move up, would that be something we'd want to, is that something we could do here? Does it have to be at 61 feet, or can we go higher on the tower, without having to come back to the board, I guess?
I don't know the answer to that.
So the answer to that question is, if this new wireless bylaw that I pass gets passed in January, and then in February you decide to move up on the tower, then you could apply for an eligible facility. could apply for an eligible facility.
Well, I think they've, they've got the equipment waiting to go now, yeah.
Install it at a, you haven't installed it yet.
No, no.
You want to start off at a higher elevation than what you're suggesting, I would suggest that you postpone, and two weeks come back with where you really want to put it.
Yeah, I would do a, I would, I would request a continuance, so just say, well, we continue the public.
We could be heard in, in two weeks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In which case, you just need to make revision to the, to the plan.
You would tell us where you act, where you want to put it with that new knowledge that there is space.
Because what you'd seen on there was a lot of stuff on it, and if you look at what you were seeing, a lot of it's been removed. So originally, they didn't have an available, see all that stuff, it's not on there, and as you see it now.
I would suggest that might be a better way to handle it, because otherwise you'd have to wait until after this gets passed, and we don't even know if it's going to pass.
Yeah, it would be cleaner for you guys, I think, to just revise plans.
So for two weeks, I, I think that would be wise to get another 100, because it's going to create more coverage, obviously, and less facilities.
Okay.
And it can clear the tank, so they can actually get hit.
And who knows, by then, maybe we can still look back at those decisions, although it's probably.
Yeah, I'm going to have to see if they can do that quickly. If I can't have the plan.
Probably, probably a town thing, but just in case. All right, so we should continue, correct? All right. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue these matters, the planning board meeting of November 16th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, five zero. Thank you. All right, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Awesome, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll try and put you not at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I know. I get to see a lot of interesting stuff.
Because it's going to be a long meeting.
Yeah, on, on that one, we'll be?
That will be, it will be a long meeting. That'll, that'll be the public hearing for all the matters.
I get it, I get it. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We do not have meetings to discuss tonight, so are there any other matters that anyone wants to bring forward? No? No? Okay. I'm just going to let you all know that Elche Park had an event last Saturday. It was fabulous. I think it may have been our biggest event so far.
It was a beautiful day.
Jim Tigges estimated, I know, I think the weather helped a lot, Jim Tigges estimates we had about 250 people there.
Wow.
I, I started counting and I couldn't keep counting because I was too busy.
Last Saturday, is that what you said?
Yes, Rosa Mexicano ran out of churros.
Wow.
And they brought a lot.
Their food is good.
They were, they brought a lot, they were great. So it was a wonderful event. We are planning our next event probably for December 9th, and that will be indoors. We are going to ask Mrs. Claus to come back. She was here two years ago and collected letters for Santa and hand-delivered them to the North Pole. We're asking her to come back, and we're going to have another holiday sing-along, but this will be led by the School of Rock, which is the new music school in town that opened up in Wayside. So more details about that in the future.
That's great.
That sounds great.
Really exciting.
Yeah, only SMA, Madam Chair. I will be going to the ZBRC meeting next Wednesday, online. So, if you want to get more information on all of the warrant articles, I'm probably going to, it's probably going to be a little bit more comprehensive than what we did today.
Do you know what time that meeting is?
It starts at 6:00 on Zoom.
6:00? No.
No? 6:00, it starts at 6:30? What is our, what did our, what did our announcement say?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
6:30 on Zoom? All right. I stand corrected.
So, I think, is that your delicate way of saying, please come? Okay.
If you can, just, because this is like, this is a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, and, you know, it's, it's all good intentions. There's, there's really nothing in here that I think is, you know, egregious or.
There's nothing controversial, but it's just, there's a lot, and I'm really happy that we're doing it. It's great. But I think town meeting isn't used to seeing this much from us, and it's a lot for them to absorb, so we need to find a way to make it, put it in bite-sized pieces.
I agree, I haven't gotten it yet, but I have to.
Caleb?
Madam, yes, and I'm just, I have my screen share right now, I just want to let people know, anybody who's watching online, or, or board members themselves, that if you go to the Burlington.org website, and then you click your government, drop down to town